Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the October 8th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. It looks like we have a quorum. And the first item on the agenda would be then to consider the approval of the Planning Commission minutes from September 10th, 2018. I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
There's a motion by Bartlett, and the second was, is that Jensen? Second by Jensen. Any questions or comments regarding the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Next item is council representative report, and that would be from Commissioner Bartlett.
Not much report, not to me, from the Planning Commission was in front of the council during the month of September. I would put out there if any commissioners want to hear certain topics that come before the council and keep you aware of things, let me know. There are some future items that have been coming up that may come before us in the future. I don't know how much you want to hear of those really sometimes, so let me know and I'll keep you in the loop on those. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item is staff report, which is the status of the current developments, and that would be Planning Director Scheel.
In your packet is the standard just summary, but I'll highlight a couple. The top one, the Grosso buildings in the Business Park North, they've come in today actually for the next permit, for their next building on that particular site. Todd Nelson was going to be working on the Marathon Station site on Main Street. Unfortunately, it sounds like that project isn't going to move into closing. They were supposed to close in, yeah, by the end of this month. Right now, it sounds like that project's not going to be moving forward. So we'll know more by the end of this month whether that's going to occur for sure or not. Public Works Garage is moving along quite well. It's been pretty wet, but they've been managing it. Almost all the interior concrete has been completed. Roofing is about 95% complete, so they're starting to close it up and do a lot of the interior, not interior finishes, but interior work. So that's still on order to be completed in December of this year. And lastly, the whole avenue project, the multifamily building phase number one is well underway. The footings are in, foundation walls are about 80% poured, and they'll be moving the construction out of the ground here pretty soon.
Any questions about the report? Seeing none, we'll move on to item five, which is a request by Kathy Camp of the Wisconsin Partnership for Housing Development for certified survey map approval for split the property at 309 Pine Street, and we're going to be looking for a recommendation to the council. Did you want to start this, Rodney?
Sure, I can give you just a quick little summary. You'll recall this was already approved in some minor modification to this lot. The modification to this lot is to add this small triangle. Lot one was intended for a four-unit building, and zoned as it is, it requires slightly more square foot or square land area to meet the minimum lot size requirement. This slight deviation that they're making here is permitted and allowed to take from this parcel, add it to this one, so that they can meet the minimum lot requirement for a four-unit building on that site.
And Kathy's here. If anybody has any questions, or if you have anything you want to say, you're welcome to come up to the microphone.
Not really, I think it's...
Come on up. We want to hear about your project.
Well, as it was pointed out, this is already considered, and we had to make a change there just so we could get the four units on lot one. As you might recall, this is a project that the Wisconsin Partnership is doing together with HATS and START to create four units of multifamily housing on that lot. So next month's, I think, will be coming for some zoning changes. But we did get funding from Dane County in the amount of $300,000 to support that development. So we're on the way to getting all the financing in place for that, and this minor change just allows us to put four instead of three units on there.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Otherwise, we'd be looking for a motion for a recommendation.
Move to approve.
Okay, a motion by Seltzer. Is there a second? By Caravello. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah, thank you.
Item number six is a request from Jim Helbeck for design approval of the facade improvements at 317 South Division Street. And you want to start that one?
Just as introduction to this, we observed that this had already taken place. You can recognize that it's in the downtown design overlay district. Conversation has been ongoing about the changes to that ordinance, but as it currently exists, this would be subject to review and consideration by the Planning Commission, and therefore it's before you for discussion and action.
Other person, Bartlett.
Rodney, the painting's already been done, but the brickwork hasn't, is that correct? Wasn't there some brickwork improvement on that corner that's been knocked down?
Jim's here, so he can answer questions.
Kevin, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't know that. I'm from La Crosse, so Jim talked me, had me do the floor inside, and then said, can you just wrap up the whole thing? So I didn't know that I had to go through these procedures, and neither did him. So we started painting, and then that's when Mike sent us a nice letter and told us that we needed to get approval. So we're doing the proper steps now, even though we're walking, we should have done this before. And I, personally, I'm the blame for it, because I, as a contractor, should have known that it was, you know, and I used to live in Stone on South Prairie Street, so I know you guys really care about your historic buildings. But, yeah, the brickwork, when trucks come in the alleyway there, about seven, eight times, Jim said, they take out that corner and they rip it all off. So I didn't touch anything ever since I got the letter from Mike that I didn't want to touch anything on the outside until I knew exactly what was going, what you guys wanted us to do, or what's proper procedure. But there is brickwork that is damaged on the left side, and so that's going to be all repaired. Yeah, it's got actually a crack that goes all the way up that window, so it starts right here, and that crack will go all the way up. So this is all going to get me done. And then there's going to be a small, like a six-inch overhang, like a lip, not as, not like the front, just so the semis don't keep, because it's, if they keep coming in on an angle, they're going to just keep taking it out. I don't know if there's a way we could put a cement pole right there, like, we talked about to prevent that building from getting hit like that all the time, but that's how in the front overhang had rotten. I don't know, did you put the before picture, do you want to show them?
Yeah, there's some before pictures, I think, and they probably sized a little smaller.
All that wood was, all that lumber was, was all rotted. All this, because all that wood, if you just scroll to the left, all that lumber was all rotten. So I took, just built new beams and new support braces. And basically, all I have to do as far as painting is just that bump out from the apartment upstairs. I'm painting that the same color as what's on the bar front, but all that red brick is going to be staying the same. We're not painting, like, we painted the brick underneath the two windows in the front, in the front of the bar, on the bottom. We painted that gray. Like that, yeah, but the up, the top bricks are going to be stained the red. So this, yeah. That bump all right there is all I have left up top.
This area up above?
And all the bricks are going to be stained, just like that. Then around the windows, it's going to be the dark blue. It's like trim work on the bottom.
Okay. Commissioner Barman?
A couple of questions. Now, I know that you have already started painting. We're looking at the picture there, and I drove by before coming here. Normally, as a commission, we give recommendations on making modifications to proposed color schemes. So I guess my question would be that if we recommended changing some of the colors, are, is there still the potential to do that, either on your part as a contractor or on Jim's part? Or...
Not this late in the year. I mean, I'm, we can do it...
Because here's, here's some of the issues that, for me, from a design perspective, when we look at this particular building. If you look, for example, at the bay window, what you call the bump out on the upper floor, that particular bay window is not, I would guess, original to the building, because it's not in, the design is not in line with anything on the lower storefront, and it's not even centered on the upper storefront. It just seems to be kind of a tack-on. And so painting it, the gray color used on the bottom is actually drawing attention to an architectural feature that, to me, detracts from the building. I actually liked it much better when it was closer to, in color to the original brick up above, because it actually then receded and kind of didn't pop. The other thing on the lower part of the facade, I don't mind the colors. I like, I like the gray and the blue, but when we just do an outline of the lower windows, again, that's drawing attention to an architectural element that we really typically don't draw attention to. Normally, you would draw attention to vertical elements, such as the support post that goes right underneath the Reverend Jim's sign, and between the two windows, you'd have that painted darker color, and then the two posts to the left and right of the two windows to kind of carry that vertical support. That's typically what you draw attention to. And so changing a few of those things, I think, would help it look a lot nicer. That's why I ask where we are at in terms of even making recommendations.
I mean, you guys are the bosses. I'm, I'm simply going to go by what you tell me to do.
Okay.
I'm, I'll try my hardest. I mean, I did this all by myself. I've got three guys that I hire on to, as a tile, I own my own tile company.
Yep.
And I'm paying these guys to go to Minnesota and do all my tile jobs while I knock this thing out. I stopped on the exterior because I didn't want to go any farther because of this kind of situation.
Right.
So you tell me what you want me to do, and I'll do my damnedest to get it done.
Okay. Just, just for the record, I would have not recommended painting the brick that was below the windows. Typically, when you have a non-painted brick, we typically don't like to see it painted because, number one, it adds now a recurring maintenance. You have to continually repaint it now, when the brick was, was really a non-main, a, an architectural element, it didn't require a lot of maintenance before that. But I guess the biggest thing I would draw attention to relates to the brick repair work that's being done off on the corner.
Mm-hmm.
When I drove by, it looks like, and I don't know if you started to do some work.
No, that's just stuck up in there.
It looks like the, right below the opening, where the bricks are kind of set in sideways, it looks like it's a Portland cement that's being used on the, on the joints, because...
That was all done before this.
All right.
Before I even looked at the building.
Well, I want to make sure...
That was a cobble job that I didn't even, I don't have none to do with.
Okay.
I'm tearing all that out and putting, because the owner of the building, I talk to her every day, she said, God, whoever did that, Kevin, did not know what they were doing.
Right.
Because they used, did not, they didn't use the right color mortar, you know, mason mortar, they used like this gray stuff that's not even, doesn't match anything on the building.
Yeah, it's, it looks like it's Portland cement, which is a very hard mortar.
Mm-hmm.
And what it will actually do is with freeze thaw, which we have here in Wisconsin.
Yeah, I know what Portland cement is.
It'll actually break, it'll actually break the bricks. And, and so I want to make sure that part of our recommendation is that when that brickwork is repaired, don't...
Oh, it'll be done...
Don't use Portland cement.
No, it'll be done right. But that was done, you know, 10, 15 years ago, when, I guess they had a bad one where they actually took out the whole corner
Mm-hmm.
of the building. You know, these semi-drivers, they don't, they think that they can turn a straight truck in there, and they, they can't do it unless they start down here and come in, down by the old Edgewater bar, and come up the alley that way, and then continue through the alleys. They've got a, you can make that turn with a straight truck. You can't make this turn with a straight truck, and they tried doing it, and next thing you know, you hear just bam, and the whole bar shakes. I'm surprised the building didn't come down yet. Seven to 11 times getting hit.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if there's a way we can have a, a concrete pole, a yellow pole, you know, to prevent that from happening, because it's just going to keep, because they're always in a hurry, you know, and these liquor distributors and these beer trucks, they're always in a hurry. And I've noticed it, especially the past four months, I've been down there every single night during the week. From, I mean, there's, I've got pictures where I was painting at 2:00 in the morning, because it was so hot during the day, you know, it's finally cool off at night, and I've, I watch these guys, and they literally don't even sometimes honk the horn to let you know you're com, they're coming out of the alley. So I mean, I don't know if there's a way that maybe Jim can propose us getting a pole put in the corner to divert them from trying to make that 90-degree turn.
Because I'm guessing when they hit the corner, it pushes it back into the brick, and that's what makes the brick pop back behind.
Exactly. And now it's starting to track up, because it's, you can only put bricks so far back before it starts going vertical.
Okay, so so far, I've heard, I think, two recommendations. Is there anything else? What I heard was the, the painting of the pillars by the windows, and then the, the brickwork kind of left. Is there anything with the...
Well, and again, I certainly understand how we're getting into the fall, and it's hitting the temperature and everything else, but you still have some painting to finish as it is, so...
Yeah.
I mean, if, I'll toss this out as something I think would look better, and I'll leave it up to you and Jim, but I think it would look a lot better in, in suit the architecture of the building if we didn't have gray underneath the bump-out windows and used a color that actually was more closely matched the upper brick. Maybe not the...
Like a maroon color on the...
Yeah, maybe not...
All that, all that wood up top?
Yep.
That is all where the, it's junk, so that's got to come on.
Yeah.
Because it's, there's gas like that thick, that rain literally pours into the windows and that bump out. I mean, it's like, it was up to me, I'd take the whole damn car out of myself, but...
And I wouldn't mind that at all either.
You know...
And bring the windows back flush, but again, I don't know what's behind it in terms of the quality of the brick, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, it is something that I don't think is probably original, and probably just had five windows going across.
And it was cheaply built, because that wood is just, it looks like lasagna.
Yeah.
And if, if there's nothing behind it, to nails, like, I would shoot fifteen penny nails through the wood into the apartment of it.
Yeah.
That bad, I mean, the beams are, they're solid though, the beams that's holding it up, they're solid, but as far as the, this phase...
I'm all for repairing the wood that's rotting, but again, I think a color that more closely...
Yeah, that's fine.
That more closely matched the brick, more of a brown, I think, would look better on the upper.
The reason why I chose, Jim told me to pick out the colors, the reason why I chose the gray and the blue look is because down at Smokey's, that's what his building is.
Mm-hmm.
And I didn't want to do it the same color as the Chinese restaurant next door.
Right.
You know, that's horrendous.
No, that's too, too bold of a red.
So, I mean, that's why I tried, because I know how blocks like to keep their color schemes the same thing.
Well, actually, we look more at the, how the color would fit the, the building in question. So colors that work real well with the existing masonry is more what we look like.
Okay.
And complement the other colors.
Well, what was on there was a baby blue, I don't know if you remember that.
Yeah, no, I, like I said, I don't mind the gray at all on the lower, but here's, here's one other thing. In addition to maybe making the, the, these support features darker, and again, it'd be nice to kind of see what that might look like, but typically, up in this area, you'd have what's called a transom window. And this would be glass that would be, would appear darker, but if you actually had the blue up here in the transom rather than around the windows, it would actually help, help that sign pop, and it would actually look more appropriate to the building as well, just a guess.
Should we just paint the whole building dark blue and do white anyway, gray maybe? I don't know.
No, no, it's, like I said, I don't mind the gray throughout the lower part, it's just what would normally be this transom area above the two windows would typically be darker.
Okay.
And if that was that blue, that actually helps the sign pop, and I think it would look good. And then just have the blue on these three support pieces.
Okay. See, I originally, I originally was, see how the boards go up?
Yep.
The wall, the signs at the wall, the walls and the signs last one? See those boards that go vertical?
Yep.
They have indentations. I was going to paint the small indentations dark blue and run them up, and then the outside is wide board, like, please...
Yeah, I wouldn't, I don't think I would personally like the striping. I don't think it would look good on the building. And again, it's more what I'm try...
Would you want this, would you want the one on the right side of the door blue too?
You know, I was trying to figure that out myself, and if we're, if you're actually, if you're open to painting the transom area dark, then I would probably stop at the bottom here and just do this, this, and this. Well, this one might go all the way up, because I think that, the, to the left of the window and to the right of the left, the left door, I think that architectural element almost carries all the way up. Is that true? I can almost see the post going from sidewalk all the way up.
Yeah, it goes from the sidewalk all the way...
Yeah.
All the way up to the inside.
So, so again, it's, it's more so what we're trying to do is highlight some of the vertical and horizontal elements on the buildings.
So the transom would stop on the right side of the window there?
Yes.
Like right?
Yep, right there. It wouldn't carry over necessarily in front of the door. Sometimes there's a separate transom over the, the door itself, but I don't know if that's really necessary in this case. And again, I, you know, I'd be willing to, you know, talk outside of this as well on some ideas.
I'll be down there every, I'm down there every day, all day during the week.
All right, so it's more just if you guys are open to just making some subtle shifts.
Yeah.
I think the color choices are fine, it's just kind of where we put the color.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? So there's a resolution, are we going to modify the resolution, or are we just going to go with it, and he's just going to work with you on the...
Well, you got my word. My dad always taught me, a man only has two things in life, his words and his credit. If he ain't got none of them, then, you guys got my word, that I'll, I'll do that the way he suggested it actually is a good idea.
Yeah.
That way you ain't got to climb up a 28-foot ladder all the way to the top and paint that gray.
Yeah. I'm, I'm fine with, again, since we've already, again, also already started, I'm fine with approving it so long as we just make it clear that we don't use Portland cement on the brick.
Oh, yeah.
That's the biggest issue for me, and then you and I can kind of talk about...
Yeah, we're actually having a mason come in and do it.
Okay, that's...
I'm on the mason's union, because I'm a tile setter, I'm in the same union, and I got a couple buddies that masons, and I'm going to have them come down here.
So are you prepared to make the motion then?
Um, yes, I, I'll move to approve the color choices, the, the gray and the blue with the addendum that we make sure the brick is not mortared with Portland cement.
Yeah. I'll give you, I'll give you my card to...
Okay. Is there a second for that?
I'll second.
All right, and there's a second by Caravello. Any more discussion on that? Is it clear what we have here? Michael?
Yep.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? You guys can exchange cards, and then we'll work on the next one.
Who was the second? It was Phil.
I'm, I'm curious about the question of, the question of a cement post or something like that to protect that corner, is that? I know, we voted on this, but I'm just curious, is it...
Let me tell you, that's not an easy, easy thing to deal with.
No, it's not.
Especially on this particular site.
Mm-hmm.
I know it's under there. Or what wasn't under there?
Yeah, because the city came, that hole in front of the, the bar...
We filled the hole.
Yeah, filled the hole. We still get water, I mean...
Did they used to have a coal bin or something there, or...
With all the, with all the rain we might get...
They used to have their barrel chute one too, though.
Two inches of rain in our basement when the city guys were out there. One day, I brought them into the bar, and you could literally, I put my maglite on there, you could watch the water just flow underneath the, it's coming right from the scene where that hole was, right underneath...
It only do so much.
Foundation, yeah. He's like, we keep coming here every two weeks to fill it, or three weeks to fill it, with blacktop, but I don't know if there's, watch that whole building drop.
Maybe some fill from the inside.
Yeah. Well, the inside's solid now, outside's not too... I don't have my card with me, but I can give you my number.
Yeah, I'll just write it down here, quick.
We'll start, we'll move on to the next one while you're doing that, then. The next one is a request by Matt Adams for design approval for the awning removal and signage installation at 143 East Main Street. It looks like Matt is here. Are there any questions or comments about this one, Rodney?
Similar, not, not the same, but another downtown design overlay application is before you to, to talk through this particular...
So you might recall, this one was here before, and when we were talking about the awning, for the, what's the name of your business?
It's, it's in Sea Cash, but I'm in the middle of going to Viking Golden Pond and saying all this approved.
Okay, so we might remember, so basically, what Matt did is, we talked, and he took down the awning and exposed the nice, I don't know, I call them glass, but there's probably a better word for it.
It's the transom area.
The transom area is exposed, and I think you intend on leaving that, and you want to put up a wrought iron sign, is that...
Yeah, so the, I was really confused. The old awning there was rotting and leaking and moldy, and it was garbage, so I was surprised it wasn't, hadn't been forced to be taken down long ago. But what I want to do is, so I couldn't put signage on the outside of my windows, those stickers, those are on the inside, but until I had approval from the city. So basically, all I want to do is take this sign, the stickers, have them re, remade, move them to the outside of the window, because with the glare, people can't see.
Okay.
It just looks horrible. And then I'm going to take a sign, and then just to the right of it, I was in that picture, you have the When to Go sign, and I'm just going to do a sign basically exactly like that with my Golden Pond, it's just going to say Golden Pond with the, with the, my logo on it, and then, you know, just my, my window stickers on the outside instead of the inside. The only, the only addition I will be making, and, because once I put those, because there's actually, on the right side, there's one that says, we pay up to 90% for gold, and on the left side, there's the Viking head, which you can kind of see. But I realized, after all the effort of actually putting them on the inside, it didn't do any good, because unless you were at a direct angle, you know, once you got even a few degrees off, the, the glare made it impossible to see the sign. So the only other thing I would do is, at the bottom, I was going to put, you know, the words of, you know, across the bottom windows, toys, jewelry, video games, things like that. But, I mean, pretty much everything anybody else is doing downtown, all the other stores.
Everybody understand the type of sign he's asking, requesting to put up?
Are we talking about a projecting sign?
Yeah, exactly. You know where, how When to Go is, have you seen When to Go?
A blade sign that comes out.
Yeah, exactly.
Perpendicular.
And that's getting to be, I think, more common downtown, because the cost of the awnings are very pricey.
Yeah, it's, it's insane. It's like $3,000 to $5,000 for an awning, which is, I mean, they just rot, and you have to replace them. And they're not, they're not historic. I mean, if you look at all that glass, it's historic, that awning is just terrible for the cost.
Go ahead. The, actually, awning, canvas awnings, which that was a canvas awning, in a lot of cases were historic.
Okay.
But they, you know, I certainly understand when it has another business's name on it, it becomes problematic, but it is, it is not, it is not uncommon for these types of buildings to have a canvas awning. A lot of cases, they would be retractable, and that was perfectly appropriate to the architecture, might have been historic. I'm not sure if the, the actual structure was historic, but being that you're on the south side of the block, you don't get any southern sun.
Right.
And so the need, typically, you'll see within a downtown, that on the other side of the street, you have lots of awnings.
Yeah, because they're, they're necessary.
And on your side of the street, you won't have as many.
Yeah, and that, that awning wasn't historic. I talked to Vern.
Okay.
He actually added it whenever he bought the building.
All right.
So, otherwise, I'm gonna assume they want to put that nice glass tiles up, taking the time to put them up to cover them.
All right. So, so, just so I'm clear, as a commissioner, are we approving whether or not a project, to add a projecting sign, the, the blade sign that we're talking about? That's what we're essentially voting on?
That, moving my stickers, window decals to the outside of the window.
Okay.
I don't, I don't want to do anything radical. I just want to let people know I'm there.
Okay. And so, I'll just ask one other question. When we look at signage within a downtown like this, the blade signs are, I love them, because it allows the people walking the sidewalk to see what the business is, like we see Wendigos. From across the street, though, typically, we would do, in addition to a window decal, like you've got, which is kind of hard to read even from across the street, you would have a flush-mounted sign that would be up somewhere on the building, like Sunny's Bar and Grill has one that goes across where the transom area was, or where the lettering might have been on the awning.
Sure.
And so, I think one of the things that you can consider, and that would probably be a different pitch, but if you had a flush-mounted sign that had your name that went across somewhere on the transom area, and sometimes it goes, it's smaller and goes across where the glass is.
So, have you seen, have you seen the way the Firehouse Tattoos has it? It actually looks really nice. They have it, they have it painted, so that just tattoo is, like, not painted black, and then the lighting behind it, and something like that. So, my concern, and the reason, the other thing I was thinking about is safety. You know, so when people drive by, and they're looking for my shop-
Yeah.
When you're driving, you know, and you can see the sign, you're going fast, you can see it. But when you, when you're like, looking out the side, and then you have to take your eye, so I, I think, I mean, I wouldn't mind, because, so here's the thing, this is a stopgap measure for me right now. So, I was in the old Klinky Cleaners Building. They wanted to up my rent to twenty-eight hundred dollars a month, which is insane. Nobody can afford forty thousand dollars a year for, for renting Stoughton, in a small town. So, I just needed to get something more affordable with a little more foot traffic.
Right.
So, I'm not gonna be here forever, I'll be honest. I just, I just need to be here. I want to do something simple, so that when I'm gone, you know, if I buy another building, it's not gonna be, you know, we're not gonna have to do, deconstruct everything. It's just like, take a couple bolts out, and we're done.
Then that, that's, that's-
And that, and that glass, my thought was, if I painted that glass, it might be very difficult to change in the future.
I would lean away from painting the glass-
Yeah.
And just, would, you could potentially hang it, but again, if you're, this is just a temporary-
Couple years, yeah.
But the blade sign and the window sign, you can just see how it works, and we can go from there.
Yeah. I mean, I've already gotten a ton of foot traffic compared, so it's, yeah, I just want to do something simple. I don't want to do anything crazy.
Okay. So, I'd, I'd move to approve.
All right. Second? Okay. Second by Bartlett. Any more discussion on this one?
And I just wanted to clarify, what, the colors of the sign, are they gonna be the same colors as the Wendigo sign? Black and your decal?
Yeah, I'm just doing it simple. Unless you'd like something rainbow colored, I can do it for you.
That looks good.
All right. You're, you're losing out, but okay.
All right. Any more questions? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. And I expect all of you to come into the store, too. That's the other, the other obligation, so.
Are we voting on that, too? Any opposed to that? None opposed. You're good. Thank you. Number eight is a request by Brian Schilling for approval of an extraterritorial land division request at nineteen sixty-six Quan Point Road in the town of Dunn.
This ETJ creates a, combines two smaller lots, but it still creates a lot that's smaller than what our minimum size in the ETJ area is. However, our ordinances do allow for us to approve it, conditioned upon the town's approval. So, if, if so desired, we can certainly do so. You'll recognize the, the location of this, this request near the lake, somewhat recognizes why the lot is much smaller than, than you might find in our rural subdivision. Also, it's a sewered, it's my understanding, this is part of the sewer district out around the lake as well. So, smaller lot size is probably, probably suitable.
And this would be a recommendation to the council. They'd have to take action on this. Any questions or a motion?
I just have a clarification question.
Sure.
In my understanding, if I, am I reading this correctly, that we're taking half of what's labeled as Lot Seven, and adding it to Lot Six to create this new Lot One that's labeled here?
Yep.
Okay. Do we have to be concerned at all with, and again, it's extraterritorial, but it seems like the lot line now then comes really close to that one-story house, in terms of the, the side setback of that particular house?
I don't think that's our concern.
That's more their issue?
The town and county still has to approve it. We're just not objecting to it, is really what we're-
Okay. It's existing.
And there's an existing facility there.
The, the house is existing.
Yeah.
But we're moving the property line up next to the house. So, what used to have, I mean, it used to be plenty of setback, because it was part of Lot Seven.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Now, now we're losing the setback for that particular house.
From this, we can't identify what the dimension is, but it could be in that ten-foot range possibly. I don't know what the town requirements are.
All right.
Any other questions? Otherwise, we're looking for a recommendation to council on that one.
Make a motion, send approval, recommendation approved to council.
Okay. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Seltzer. Any discussion? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Number nine is a request by Greg Shaw for approval of extraterritorial land division requests for property located on Taylor Lane in the town of Dunkirk. This one will also be a recommendation to council. Anything on this one we should know?
It meets the general standards that we have for land divisions within ETJ area. Applicants are here, if there's questions of them, but I certainly think it's something that we would be in a position to support.
Any questions, or?
And this is also contingent on the town approval, correct?
Yeah. Town, town and county still have to approve anything in ETJ as well.
Come on up.
Yeah, perfect.
Mr. Shaw.
They may have already.
They already have. They've already, everybody's approved, and-
Yeah.
I guess the surveyor and county didn't say anything about, we need your approval. I guess we're just barely in that limit, and so they asked us to come here. But they've already both approved it. Thank you.
All right. Yeah. So, this, what's labeled here in our, our handouts is Lot One. This is being carved out of a much larger parcel?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I, that's, I was a little hard to understand that. So, what size was the original parcel, just out of curiosity?
Um, I think it is now, sixty, I think it was fifty-seven, fifty-six acres.
Okay.
Originally, it said it was fifty-eight when I bought it. They started with eight, it was fifty-six something. Now, I don't know.
All right. So, we're pulling five acres out of a, what was it, fifty-five?
It's shrinking, so I better do something quick.
All right. Thank you. That helps. Appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise, we're looking for a recommendation to council on this one.
Make a motion to recommend the council to approve.
All right. Is there a second? Second by Robinson. Okay. Any discussion? Here are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number ten is a request by Bob DeVorek for a direct annexation of a portion of the town of Dunkirk and a portion of the town of Rutland. And we're gonna be looking for a recommendation on this one as well. Rodney, you want to give some background on this one?
Yeah. So, the petition before us is to annex the property that's designated on the map as part of the annexation petition. Just to give you some, some background, there might have already been some. Town, Rutland-Dunn Town Line Road runs along the north side of the, the upper side of this page. Fifty-one somewhat bisects the annexation petition. The areas to be annexed include this area on the west side of Fifty-One, the Highway Fifty-One right-of-way, to make it contiguous along this section to the city of Stoughton. The Granirude Farm, of which this is part of, included this parcel on the north side of Elkman Way, as well as this parcel on the south side of Elkman Way. The petition includes annexation of the property as shown here. There is two, there are two parcels that would yet remain in the town of Dunkirk at this location, as well as the Eaglesons Woods, single-family properties on the backside of, of this area. Just for education purposes, this is really an interesting intersection of four townships come together right at this point. So, north and west is the town of Dunn. South and west is town of Rutland. North and east is Pleasant Springs, and then south and east are Dunkirk. So, the remaining town of Dunkirk parcels that will remain in this segment are, as I indicated, these parcels here, and then these two parcels here. As you can appreciate, these were always discontinuous, if you will, to other town of Dunkirk properties. And I think that's reflected in the Department of Administration's finding that it's in the public interest for the city to annex these parcels, recognizing that these two isolated parcels and these isolated parcels will still remain in, in much the same fashion as they were prior to the annexation request.
Any initial questions? We have representative from Mr. DeVorek's group here, if you have any questions for their attorney.
I should just add, it's in our comprehensive plan. It's in our anticipated growth pattern to annex these properties and become part of the city. A development plan hasn't been shared or proposed, but it would, any development would have to be consistent with our comprehensive plan and go through those steps. In addition to the petition of which you're reviewing at this point, the common council will be considering this as an annexation ordinance. But in addition to that, there's a pre-annexation agreement that the city historically has used to outline expectations related to the annexation. And so, the common council will be considering that at their meeting tomorrow night as well.
Commissioner Barman, and then Bartlett.
My questions primarily relate to the letter that was included in our packet from Baling Law Office, and the requests by some of the Dunkirk residents to, on two issues that I saw. One was the issue of access to Highway Fifty-One, which I'm not seeing any reference to in our packet, so I was, it kind of struck me as being something that I don't know anything about.
Okay.
As well as their interest in having something, I don't know if that would be part of the annexation agreement that relates to noise and light intrusion and those kinds of things. So, if, if you could speak to that.
Certainly. First of all, I'll start by suggesting access is not proposed to change as part of this annexation. Elkman Way is, is still anticipated. As development plans and proposals start being vetted out, there might be some alterations. But certainly, you cannot isolate these from having access to a public way. So, I don't think that would, would be changing to an effect that wouldn't allow them access to Fifty-One in some manner. The second one, related to lighting and how this develops, that's really gonna be something that we have to evaluate, how the area is proposed to be developed, and how that gets mitigated. Adjacent land uses to other zoning districts, we have buffer yard standards that have to be taken into consideration. We have lighting standards as part of our zoning code standards. So, I don't know that we can conceive, in theory, all of the potential iterations of options that might be there. But certainly, the zoning code does have tools that we try to consider those as part of development proposals.
Thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions? We have two attorneys in the room right now, so feel free to pick their brains. Other person, Bartlett?
I just had a question for Rodney. I live up in that area, and I had heard before that there was a strip of land in there that was city-owned, that was in part of the Eagleson Woods. Is that incorrect, or was there a small strip that was through there?
Yeah.
That was already city-owned?
It may have been referenced as city-owned, but I don't know that it was, it was within the city limits already. So, this stretch along the northern part was not city-owned, but it was within the city limits. And I'll just give you a tidbit of history on, on some of that. When the, this is the Linerude Farm, and the Linerude Farm, the Walmart discussion and all that was taking place many moons ago for this property. There was consideration about how the intersection was gonna look at this point, and the Linerude slash Walmart team acquired a piece from the Granirude Farm to help facilitate that connection at Fifty-One at that intersection. Therefore, when the Linerude Farm was annexed, this chunk of land was annexed at the same time. Again, it's not city-owned property, but that might be the parcel you're referencing.
It is, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise, on this one, we're looking for a recommendation to the council.
Make a motion to recommend approval to council.
Second by Jensen. Any more questions, comments, discussion? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
One opposed? Okay. That carries. Item number eleven is to propose zoning ordinance amendment to Section seventy-eight dash five seventeen and seventy-eight dash nine thirteen, related to the downtown design overlay district. And the first point of order would be a public hearing. So, I'll close the regular meeting, and then I'll reopen for a public hearing. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak at the public hearing regarding the ordinance seventy-eight dash five seventeen, or ordinance seventy-eight dash nine thirteen? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. And then, the item on the agenda for our body is the recommendation to council on Chapter seventy-eight. And I'll just say a few brief words, and then we'll get into it. I'd like to thank Commissioner Barman has come in a couple times and helped us through this process, as lo, as well as Attorney Dregney, and Rodney, and Michael, and myself. Been very helpful to try to facilitate this. It's been a long road. This thing started out at council almost two years ago. Spent a fair amount of time at the Landmarks Commission, which I was on at the time, and somehow it followed me all the way back to the Planning Commission, and here we are, hopefully coming down to the home stretch. So, I don't know if there's anything you want to go through, Rodney, or Matt, or just to kind of get everyone up to speed with the changes that we made? Other person, Jensen, you have something?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I said, I'm impressed with it. I, I, I actually took the time to read this thing over the weekend. And I could actually make some sense of it. So, yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor. I, I, I'm very pleased.
Any other questions or comments, or submit, you want to walk us through some things, or what would you say?
Well, I would just have, I, I think the draft that's before the planning commission tonight is really a vast improvement over what you have now, in terms of clarity on a number of key points, providing standards to guide decisions. You now have some really, I think, standards that, that, as you say, you can read them, and you can understand them, and, and, and you really also, with Commissioner Barman did a great job in helping to distinguish between historic preservation, on the one hand, and, and the other objectives that are really at play in this ordinance. So, it's gratifying to see where you are now, and it obviously took a lot of time and effort to get here. People who think drafting ordinances is easy don't necessarily know how hard it is. It can be really hard to, to do something like this. And so, I'm, I'm happy to see where you are.
Maybe if I can just clarify that, what's in your packet. The redline version represents some of the discussions we had at the staff level following your last planning commission, and Commissioner Barman's suggestions are reflected in the, the redline version. The last pages are actually a clean copy, because really what we're doing is, we're repealing seventy-eight dash nine thirteen, and we're repealing and recreating seventy-eight five seventeen. So, that's why, since we're repealing an entire section and recreating, it really wasn't, it wouldn't be very logical to show you a complete redline version of something that we're completely repealing and starting over with. So, the clean version is really what you're looking at approving. The redline version in a packet really reflects the most recent discussions following the last planning commission meeting.
And what you're gonna see is really a slimmed-down version of it. There was a lot of language that was duplicating, whether it was conforming or not. And what Commissioner Barman did is, he kind of led us through a process and said, you know, we really don't need that. We just need to identify what the standards are, so it's easy for an applicant, such as the people we had in here tonight, to just simply look at it, or for us to sit down and explain it to them. And when they come to us, I think most of their questions will be answered. And so, we, hopefully, we won't have to do so much on the fly as well. So, I think it, it's, it's a vast improvement. And I think the process would be, is if, if this group were to recommend it to council tonight, then there would be a two-step process, because it's an ordinance at council. Does that sound right?
Two readings at council.
So, there'd be two readings at council, so they would, you know, have a couple hacks at it as well. But I think that what we're presenting here is pretty solid. Other person, Jensen?
Yeah. The, the thing that needs to go along with this, though, and I'm not sure exactly how we do that, would be the repeal of the, of the-
The current one?
Well, the repealing of the, okay, I think, moratorium on demolition, because that's part of what this is.
I can't remember. Is there, is that still in place as to anything?
Just on the blacksmith shop.
Yep.
Been lifted as to everything else?
Yes.
Yep.
Which, this ordinance really doesn't even relate to that.
No, no.
Doesn't really.
At the end of the day, but that's kind of how it all started.
Yeah, that's how it all started. It was tied back to that. So, I don't know if that's something we want to even consider, or just let that happen when it happens.
I guess, as a council member, you can make that request if you so choose, or if you talk to the RDA.
I think because it's-
I mean, it's not really on for this tonight.
Yeah. I think that can be done just in council.
You're right.
You know, I think it can be done. So, I, I'd make the recommendation to repeal Section seventy-eight, or to recommend to council to repeal Section seventy-eight dash nine thirteen, and repealing and recreating Section seventy-eight dash five seventeen in the Stoughton Municipal Code.
All right. There's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Second by Bartlett. I have Commissioner Barman.
Just one question before we finish, and I'm glad everyone's liking it so far, but may I go back to-
But may I go back to an email that you sent that, that was looking at the comprehensive plan? And there were three issues, I think, that were raised. And I know we had an email exchange, but I can't remember if we ever kind of resolved whether there was any modifications to any kind of language that we thought. And I, I honestly, I didn't get a chance to go back and look at it before tonight's meeting, because I'd forgotten about it.
I don't think there's a concern.
So you think, my recollection was that we were pretty, we thought that it was pretty consistent.
It was consistent with the comp plan. I know Michael and Rodney reviewed it. I followed up on it the other day, and they seemed to be good with it.
Okay. That was my recollection. I just wanted to make sure.
It's a good point to make. We did try to cross-check it, because it's sometimes, that's where it kind of falls through the cracks. And we did take the time to do that.
Yeah, I guess I'd just echo all of Commissioner Jensen's. Since this commission didn't have any part of putting that moratorium in place, I think council's the place to approve that. I had one question for Commissioner Barman, I think probably. Section seven D, the horizontal bands. I guess one of the people we forced tonight had transom windows, and he said he had considered painting them. And I know we protect them, we try not to fill them in, but painting, once they paint them, I assume that's pretty hard to get off and restore those windows. Is, do we have anything included? I don't see it to keep them from painting over those if possible.
I, I believe you were referring to which?
Seven D, the horizontal bands. Existing transom windows should not be filled with brickwood or other materials. Should we also include something about not painting over them, or do you feel that's necessary?
Yeah, you know, it's, there is another place within this that we talk about not painting. And I believe it, it might be G, in the rhythm of, relationship of solids and voids.
I do see that. Thank you.
Yeah, so I believe in that section, we already talk about not painting the windows or glassed areas. But it, it might be, in terms of just clarity, it wouldn't hurt necessarily to include it when we're referencing transom as well. But at least it has covered at least one place in here.
So if you want to do that, then we would need an amendment to the motion?
Well, I would just say, it, it does say in G, it says, "Windows, including transom windows, shall not be painted or filled with brickwood or other materials." I think it really does.
I think it's covered.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm surprised they found it so quick.
You know it. You know it, though.
We've been going like this before.
Questions go to you.
They'll send us a bill, that's the problem.
We should.
Any other questions or comments before we vote on this? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Excellent. Future agenda items?
You have to give author, author, you know, accreditation to Todd then.
Yeah. We could have a ceremony.
Yeah, one thing for-
Future agenda item?
Yeah, future agenda.
Okay.
I would, I had a request to address the issue of chickens. They wanted to go from four to six.
Okay.
If we have a discussion item on that.
We can do that. We should have plenty of time now.
Yep.
I, I have a question. You know, we've got about four pages worth of suggested amendments to the zoning code. Do you want to have an open dialogue about those in the, in the same timeframe as we talk about chickens? Because-
Bees, is that part of it too?
The bees issue is, it does affect the zoning code.
Bees, chickens, and the other four pages of suggestions.
Urban agriculture, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So certainly, we've noted that there is an interest in talking about chickens. But we, we'd like to be able to summarize or have an open discussion about a number of things we've come across in the zoning code. Some of them are, I'll call them low-hanging fruit. Others are gonna take a deeper conversation about how we want to go with them. So, we'll, we'll start to tick off some of those with you at upcoming meetings.
Okay. Any other future agenda items? Seeing none. Item thirteen?
Move to adjourn?
There's a motion by Jensen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carivelo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Did I miss you?
I, I did have one comment I'd like to make.
Sure.
It's very brief. But I noticed, and I don't like to pull things out from the past, but down here, I notice in Status of Developments, Hilton True Hotel plans to start this year. I remember very clearly, a year and a half ago, sitting two seats down, and the developer's attorney was standing here, and he said that it would be finished by the end of 2018. And I said, is that in the contract for you to go ahead with this? And he said, yes, we will do it, and it's in our agreement. And I just, I don't want to pull back the bad old times, but I think it's a great lesson for this council to, to absorb that when people start BSing you, and that's a polite way of putting it, something that important, because that was part of what the, the fact we were gonna pay back the TIF with these taxes. And now it hasn't even been started, apparently, and I haven't been keeping track of it, but-
We'll try to get you an update. It's been kind of a roller coaster, and I'll see where they're at. And then I can give you guys an update.
I think it'd be worthwhile getting an update on the TIF increment that's being generated based on the facilities out there without that, are far exceeding projections that were required as part of the development agreement.
My main objection is to, to have the statement that that is in the contract. And I asked how it would be enforced, and, but, I don't, I don't want to bring, bring it back again. I just, it's something, the kind of thing that we need to be, and I think, I, I think the council's doing a great job this year and the Plan Commission, you know, of getting into details that maybe before we let slide by. So, it's not a negative comment, it's just something we need to watch for.
Alright.
I would just say that you must done a great job, because no one came to the public hearing.
Good sign. Alright, so we are adjourned.
If somebody was not happy, they'd be here, right?
Yeah, it's either that, or maybe it didn't get sent out, right?